All right, we're gonna get this party started. Welcome to our December 6th regular Board of Education meeting. We are gonna, I'm gonna turn it over right away to Dr. Hunt.
Thank you and good evening. As if you've been to a board meeting, we always open or we frequently open by recognizing honoring a student to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And this month, we reached out to Huff School, Huff Elementary School, Mr. Ernst, thank you for being here tonight, to nominate a student. And I actually had the opportunity to go over and be a part of letting this young man know that he was going to have this honor. And I could just tell you by the way his face lit up, the way he interacted, he's certainly an amazing young person with a great future. Before I unveil his name, I do want to read to you what has been nominated or said about him. This young, third grade, young man is an incredibly positive student. He always has a smile on his face. Let me see. Yes. And he spreads that joy to his classmates, staff, and the Huff Street community every single day. He's passionate about art, enjoys learning about art, and looks forward to trying what he has learned. He's a great communicator. He especially enjoys sharing his work with his classmates. When he notices his peers are struggling or has, or have questions, he is always willing to teach and support them in times of need. His face lights up when, when he sees people he cares about accomplish their goals. He has a huge heart and the drive to overcome any challenge, and we are fortunate to have him as part of the Barrington 220 community. Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in congratulating Eric Tavares as our Star Spangled Student of the Month. Eric, come on up. Joseph Wilson's ready.
So, real quick, before we do the pledge, we're gonna do a real quick roll call, so you get ready to tell everybody to stand up after we do our roll call. Sandra Bradford.
I'm here.
Angela Wilcox. Barry Altshuler.
Here.
Leah Colister-Lazari. Erin Chan Ding.
Here.
Katie Carum.
Here.
Steve Wang.
Eric, we were so excited about introducing you.
I got to start.
If they introduce ours first.
All right.
Ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Eric, if you can stay right there for a minute. We're coming to you.
You stay right there.
There's less room than we should. I know, it feels a little...
Yep. We'll need a motion and all that good stuff.
Hold that up there, you ready? All right, ready?
Please give Eric a big round of applause.
All right. So this evening, we are gonna jump right into, I know we got a lot of recognitions, we will get to them, but we are gonna jump right into our public hearing. So do I have a motion from the board to open, to, for, to open for the property tax levy hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Sandra Bradford.
Yes.
Angela Wilcox.
Yes.
Steve Wang.
Yes.
Katie Carum.
Yes.
Erin Chan Ding.
Yes.
Barry Altshuler.
Yes.
All right. So, we do have one person signed up for a public comment for the hearing. Brian Priggy, I'm gonna ask you, as you come forward, instead of me reading through, since there's only one person listed here, you have read the, the policy?
Yes.
On visitors to property, so I'll, I will skip through my reading of all of that, if that's okay with the board?
All right.
All right.
My name is Brian Priggy, and I get to change my preamble today, because as of this morning, I have one at Lions and two at the ELC. I'm here tonight to talk about the proposed tax levy. Given that this levy is a sizable portion of our tax bill, I believe it's important to make sure that the school district is being a good steward of the resources afforded to it. One of the ways that I sought to verify that was by comparing us to other districts from a spending perspective. We, of course, are a unit district, which makes comparisons tough, so I compared against our closest neighbors Township High School District 211 and Community Consolidated School District 15. I found that 211's average spend per student outpaces our high school spend by $2,931 annually. I found that District 15's spending has increased at double the pace of 220's over the last four years. Despite being outpaced by our peers in spending, we maintain a class size roughly 5% smaller than both reference districts, a higher frequency of physical education than District 15, and a 2% higher graduation rate than 211. Based on these factors and the economic climate we are in globally, I urge the board to approve this tax levy during the vote on the 20th. Thank you.
We don't have anyone else signed up. I'm not seeing anyone in the audience standing up. So, do we have a motion to close the hearing?
So hove.
Second.
I think we need a roll call to close, so.
Barry Altshuler.
Yes.
Katie Carum.
Yes.
Erin Chan Ding.
Yes.
Sandra Bradford.
Yes.
Steve Wang.
Yes.
Angela Wilcox.
Yes.
All right, our hearing is closed. Real quick, do I need to say anything about we might have another hearing?
You can, there will be another hearing prior to our meeting on December 20th as well. Same, same beginning of the meeting.
So we'll have another tax levy hearing to make sure we comply with the, the number of days notice and things like that. So we will have another second hearing? Just, just wanna let everybody know that. So with that, let's get on to our recognitions.
Turn it over to you, Dr. Hunt.
Okay, at this time, I'm gonna ask District Athletic Director, Mr. Rubenstein, to step forward and do recognition of our state champion swimmer.
Thank you very much. I'm actually going to just introduce our head girls' swimming coach, Alex Michael Lajuski, to introduce his state champion swimmer. Thank you for having us here tonight. So, Alex and the Curers, come on up.
Hi there. I'm here today to help recognize and congratulate Jenna Kerr on her 2022 state title in the 500 freestyle. There are numerous impressive components regarding Jenna, and I will highlight a few of them efficiently for you here tonight. Jenna broke our school record as well as the facility pool record in the 500 free, swimming a time of 446.3. This is roughly 12 seconds ahead of the rest of the field. In state history, only one girl has ever gone faster than Jenna in the 500 free. As impress, as impressive as these statistics are, as her coach, one of the most tremendous qualities to me is her attitude as a teammate. In 2021, we got second place at the IHSA State Meet as a team, and Jenna specifically opted out of doing her two best events, the 200 and the 500, knowing her teammates would score in those events and it would give us a chance to bring home a trophy. I am really grateful that Jenna was able to end her senior year on a good, strong note, and it was extremely well deserved. Jenna Kerr.
Jenna did inquire about having any words to say. Jenna, do you have anything to say?
Um, I don't. But I'm definitely thankful for the opportunity.
I don't know a whole lot about spin, swimming, but 12 seconds faster in the 500 seems pretty impressive. And I know enough about sports that, that moment in the pool was a reflection of a tremendous amount of time of preparation, and it takes support from home as well. So, congratulations to you, and don't escape, we would like to grab a picture with the state champion.
Yes.
All right, we'll also add in just real quick with it, she's swimming next year. She assigned her letter of intent.
Nice.
All right. All right, let's, let's do a, let's do a picture.
No, I'm good.
Anything you wanna say? Anything you wanna say while we go back to our seat? All right, so next up, we were to have our student council report from Olivia Felphi, but unfortunately, she is not able to be here tonight. She is not feeling well, so you guys get my report a little bit early. So, I wanted to start with a little bit of a celebration in my report. Last night, we held the grand opening of the greenhouse at Barrington High School. It was a very, very exciting event, and special thanks to our VHS staff, Mr. Ardent A, Mr. Kedzie, and Ms. Baylor. And, but the grand opening was really made possible by our Barrington 220 Educational Foundation, and I wanted to recognize several donors that contributed. At the visionary level, Chris and Maggie Flans and the Jankowski family. At the innovation level, we had an anonymous donor. And at the champion level, Shirley and Terry Sanders gave a donation in memory of Dean Sanders, who was a Barrington High School teacher, coach, and assistant principal from 1968 to 1976. There are many, many other donations from generous community members, allowing the foundation to fund such a significant investment in our horticulture sciences and agricultural food and natural resources career pathway. Over 25% of the jobs in Illinois are associated with this industry. The foundation's commitment to this exciting new classroom, or renovated classroom, I should say, was $192,000. So really appreciate and thank the foundation and the generous donors for that. The foundation does have another project coming up in the, for the Culinary Arts Lab and the Associated Culinary Internship Program with its Pro Start Restaurant and Curriculum Certification, and they will gladly accept donations at the220foundation.org. You can get to that off of the Barrington 220 website as well. Also, since we last met, we had our III conference, so thanks again to Barry, Steve, and Leah who attended, and special thanks to Steve for being our representative, and I'm sure you will give us a little bit more detailed report when we come up to that. So, it was a, it was a successful event. Dr. Hunt, I'm gonna ask you to give us an update on some of the public comments that we heard at the last meeting regarding some racial concerns. And I wanted just to remind the community that per our board equity statement, that, quote, "Hate has no place in Barrington schools."
Okay.
I have one more thing.
Oh.
Sorry.
I won't respond.
Don't respond just yet. Finally, I wanna take a few minutes to just recognize Jack Legasholt, who recently passed away. Jack was a Board of Education member from 1981 to 1985. He was a huge contributor in many other ways to the Barrington community. He was a great supporter of the Little League programs in Barrington. He had a son who played baseball and a daughter who played softball, and his son was actually a member of the famed 1986 IHSA championship team. So Jack's insight and contributions really enabled the field of dreams that our entire community enjoys. So without Jack, we wouldn't probably have the field of dreams we have today, and even be appreciating the renovations that, that are underway. So thank you very much to Jack and his family. Our condolences are with you. That, I'm gonna do public comment first, and then I'm gonna go to you, okay?
I'll still be here.
You'll still be here?
Yeah.
We actually don't have anyone signed up for public comment. Is there anybody that wanted to address the board that missed? Okay, hearing none, I'm gonna close public comment, and I will go right into Dr. Hunt's report.
For real?
For real this time.
So, so thank you, and last, last meeting, we did receive a public comment regarding an incident in one of our elementary schools, and I think I speak for the board when I say that there's, there's obviously no place or tolerance for racist comments or racism within our school district, and I think it underscores the importance of the work that we're doing with diversity, equity, inclusion throughout our school district. Specific to the incident, I wanted to make sure the board is aware that we have addressed it, both kind of in individual classroom and building level. That's involved disciplinary action that was necessary, student interventions and counseling. Mr. Kirk actually went to each classroom, did read alouds, and had conversations with classes, and there's ongoing work with our Department of Teaching and Learning, Nate Rouse and Diversity and Equity, and our building principal on a building-wide initiative to kind of address this at a variety of levels. So, I just wanted to follow up, provide that insight and direction for the board. Obviously, if there's any questions, I'm happy to respond to those.
So it sounds like there's a consequence piece that happened, and also an education piece that's ongoing too.
That's correct. All right, I am gonna jump into my superintendent report, and I know we've got a lot of conversations and discussions, so I tried to keep it brief tonight as, as we kind of move through this. I do wanna provide the Board of Education an update on frame of 220. We've had a variety of meetings kind of internally with our executive council, as well as our design teams, and we are at a position in which we've developed work areas under each of the priorities that were established. I think we've updated the board on some minor adjustments we've made to the priorities coming into or coming out of that first meeting. I anticipate, or we anticipate, taking that work out to our staff. We're actually gonna go to every staff meeting throughout the district, share that work with them, and solicit additional feedback from our teaching staff, as well as subcommittees that exist throughout the district. We'll bring all of that together, and we likely will be in front of the board with an update, public update at the end of January, beginning of February, to share that work with you. We likely will share a draft of that prior to, so you can kind of see how this has been progressing. But very excited about the work, and certainly appreciative of community members that are involved in that and staff, as well, as it's always time and a pull away from kind of the, the things that would keep us busy every single day. So very excited about that. The next, I, I will piggyback on your thanks to the Education Foundation. When, when looking at this district and thinking about, you know, whether I would come here, you look for that relationship and support from community. And one of the things that, you know, hit me as I toured around the district, and I saw the various programs that make Barrington unique, there's this sign that hangs outside and recognize the Ed Foundation in almost every one of those scenarios and situations. And again, they have stepped forward and delivered with this, with this wonderful educational space, you know, that, that started in a conversation and, and served our horticulture students, but quite honestly, I think will expand far beyond that. If you had the experience of walking through that space prior to renovation, you would be amazed at the work that has been done to bring that space to life and prepare it for the education of our students. And we are certainly very appreciative of the donors that you recognized and the hard work and dedication of the community members who stepped forward to not only give, but also serve, you know, put, put campaigns together to, to make that a reality. So I believe we're already looking, and Mr. McWilliams, at almost a double in enrollment going forward in the Horticulture Program. We had the luxury of having our science teachers who can very, much better than I, articulate how they're gonna integrate that space at the high school level with environmental sciences, and, and are very excited about the space. And I, I give our, our staff a ton of credit, and they started conversations about how can that facility expand beyond the student body of Barrington High School and, and really open that up. We've had third graders visit the campus already doing work outside, and I know there's conversations with middle school classes as well. So that, that idea of, and I, and I said this without planning it last night, but the idea of planting a seed and fertilizing it from the Ed Foundation really came to life in this project, and we wanna recognize and thank them for this educational environment that'll serve as a springboard for our students, not only at Barrington High School, but across the district as well. And I think it inspires that next conversation about, you know, the, what, what Heart Road and, and what potential that, that has, and I know that we, we've got some internal work going on in that, that we'll be excited to update the board probably in the spring. Last thing, I just want to remind our community that we are having coffee and conversations. In fact, I had one this morning at, at Pepper Park. You, you never know when you roll something like this out, how it's gonna kind of go over. And I would tell you that, one, they've been very well attended. I think we've had very productive and honest dialogue about the school district. I thank board members who've been able to attend, and I would invite you all to maybe try to target one if you, if you can come. It's, it's great to have the opportunity to maybe cover a few highlights, but move away from the agenda and just hear from our, our public and have conversations. The other thing that I started to do this week, I went to Prairie, and we're just, I'm trying to set up informal opportunities for staff to come in and chat as well about direction of the district and thoughts that they may have. And, you know, we, I would love to say I'm, I'm the great marketer here, but Sam and her department came up with snacks with the superintendent. I'll let you decide if that works. But I, I think from, from, you know, our, our meeting that we adjusted a little bit, and from these experiences, these type of opportunities are gonna serve the school district very well as we hear from our community and better understand the kind of the expectations of our school district going forward. Any questions? That would conclude my report, or certainly any comments. I know we had a couple of board members that were there this morning, if you, if you wanted to, you know, make any comments regarding that.
I think we should think about having some kind of workshop in the greenhouse, like every season. We did, we made like swags, I think they're called, boughs, Boughs of Holly, and it's, now it smells like Christmas in our house, and like, it's a great way to expose the community to our greenhouse and feel like we have some kind of green sun, but we don't. But I think it's a, it's a cool idea. Also, did we, are those new, the icons for the learner profiles?
Uh, so we've, we've been using them, them most of the fall.
Oh, okay.
Really good.
Yeah, Steve and I were at the coffee this morning, and I just, not to repeat what Dr. Hunt said, I think it's a great opportunity for the community. I know I've said it over and over again, I know public comment is not easy, especially when we don't respond, but these are a great way to come and talk with us and get a response. So I highly encourage people to come, and it, the conversation was great this morning, so I was glad to be there.
I would say one more thing, so I think if Olivia was here, I know she would've brought it up, but Winter Fest is this, Winter Wonder Fest is this weekend at the high school.
That was the one.
I'm, I'm looking at the audience going, ooh, I better not forget to say that. So both Friday and Saturday night, so Friday night from 6:00 to 9:00, and Saturday from 5:00 to 9:00, I think I've got that right. So don't miss out on the Winter Wonder Fest at Barrington High School.
Tickets are available online.
Tickets are available.
$10, I think?
You get them online? If you go to, if you go to the Barrington High School website, or can you come to the district website? Do we know? Link in both. We'll make sure we have a link in both, right? It's one of the rotating themes there. All right, so, let's, let me...
I think you can buy the door too, right?
Can we buy tickets at the door, Bridgette?
Yes.
Okay.
Just in case.
Just in case.
The link is on the homepage for the district.
Excellent. Just in case people couldn't hear that, the link is on the homepage for the district. Okay, so next up is informational reports. Does anybody have any questions? Okay, then next up is board committee reports.
Sandra, do you wanna go through the finance committee, or should I?
Go ahead.
Okay.
I'll take a break.
Sure. Well, we discussed three primary items today during the finance committee. All three will be coming back to the full board for discussion and review. But in short, and Dr. Biden, please keep me honest here, if there's things that I missed that you think are relevant to mention, please, please stop me. But the first matter was as it relates to kindergarten enrichment fees. In short, the administration is recommending a 7% increase on those costs relative to 2022 school year figures, or I should say 2022, 2023 school year figures. This will be, you know, in accordance with how our expenses will change, and, you know, frankly, this is the recommendation that's coming forth, that, you know, Sandra and I both agree is reasonable to bring forward. The second matter, anything else, Dr. Biden? The second matter was related to summer school fees, and this is for the summer of 2023. And on this note, we were actually able to essentially freeze those expenses outside of a couple of, and I'm sorry, looking through the notes here, there are a couple of lab fees, I believe, that are gonna see increases, but outside of that, the general rates are staying consistent. Yeah, and some changes to the BOSS program based on reduce... Correct. Friskalization and reduced class size. Thank you. And then thirdly, it relates to the lease of 24 iMac desktops, as well as two MacBook Pros for our graphic design slash digital photography lab. And at least from this perspective, these computers will be funded through our Perkins grants. So again, we're in agreement that those should come forward to the full board for discussion and review and ultimate approval. And that's pretty much it as far as finance committee, unless there's anything else that you want mentioned, Dr. Biden?
Yeah, well, well said.
Okay. Well, appreciate that. Sandra, is this a good time to go through the delegate work, or did you wanna do that later?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Well, I'll keep this brief. In short, of the eight new and amending, or excuse me, amended resolutions, the ones that we, that we've supported going forward and was also deemed necessary to be, I don't know where to get to the exact term, to adopt, did go forward, and that is the fund balances mill ratio adjustment resolution under new, and under amended existing, the capital grant fund for school buildings, the school safety fund, the mandate, mandates review committee, and then the financial contributions for school board elections. Those all went forward, and we voted on those accordingly in, with respect to how this board voted and supported. Now, for those that we did not necessarily agree with, the ones that we opposed under the new resolutions, so specifically, alternative fueled school bus funding, as well as the firearm dealer location, neither one of those did we vote on, and that's because the district who submitted those recommendations did not object to the, the, the committee's assessment or recommendation, I should say, to not adopt. And the same can be said about admin, excuse me, existing resolution number six, which was involvement with candidates for public office. Again, even though the recommendation was to not adopt, the submitting district did not file objection, and therefore, we did not vote on that matter. And just for, you know, future purposes, if there is a situation like this where we, like, for example, with number six, the involvement with candidates for public office, if we support it, but it was recommended not to adopt, and it might be good, good best, good practice for us to contact the submitting district and request that they file a, well, an opposition to the do not adopt recommendation. As far as other areas, oh, I'm sorry, let me go back. Current position statements, as well as deletions and amendments, we did agree to support those, and as an assembly, we did support those. And...
As far as other lessons learned, or, I'm sorry, one more thing, actually.
We did go and affirm the recommendations of the nominee committee for leadership within the IASB, so Simon Campworth of Peru 124, and Mark Hames of Flanagan Cornell 74, were both affirmed as the president and VP of the, of the delegate. Now, finally, getting back to what I was saying, as far, as far as lessons learned, one recommendation I would make to, you know, whoever takes this over next year, is when you register on Friday, or if possible, on Saturday, before meetings begin, I would recommend going to get your credentials, because when I went, there was a massively long line. And while I wasn't able to get there on time, I know there were probably a good number of delegates that, you know, had to, you know, wait and were not able to vote, unfortunately, until they got their credentials. And then the other thing was, and I, and I did check, this is, this was unique to this year, and this was a, this is something, again, that we can, you know, make sure that we discuss, and just for the purposes of this board, I wanna be clear that I ended up not even opining on these, because we did not agree to them as a board, but there were three proposed amendments to the IASB constitution. Two were ultimately approved, one was not. The two that were approved were future resolutions require a two-thirds majority to pass, the other being a resolutions committee can determine, or can modify, the appeal period for resolutions that are deemed, recommended not to adopt. And then the one that was rejected, or I should say voted down, was IASB officers should have a two-year term versus a one-year term, which is what we have today. But at any rate, point being here is that we, because we did not look at it as a board, I chose not to vote in those, you know, positions. I chose not to vote in those, you know, positions. And I think it's just something that we should look into in future delegate assemblies, because again, we should have a voice in how this ultimately gets voted. But outside of that, I think that's pretty much it. Does anybody have any questions?
Do you want to do it again next year? You did a great job.
If I go to a committee, or, excuse me, if I go to the conference, I would be happy to do it.
They're serious about shutting those doors, right?
They are so serious.
So serious.
You can't even like use the restroom, right?
I had to use the restroom once, and I had ended up not being able to vote for, or I almost ended up not being able to vote, but then they announced that there was no appeal, so we'd have to vote.
I think Steve brought up a good point, because the alternative fuel school bus funding, we actually supported, right? You, that one, and, and that was in contrast to the committee recommendation. Same with the firearm dealer location, moving that further, 1,500 feet, I think, and that's not a 500. And so, so he's right that if the district doesn't file an appeal to the resolutions committee's recommendation, then it doesn't come up at all. And so if we want that to come up, we should say, we should.
We should contact the, yeah, we should contact the submitting district.
Does the submitting district have to be the one that appeals?
That's my, that's my read of the.
I think that's true, yes.
Yeah, that's my read of the constitution.
So contact that district and say, hey, actually, we're behind your resolution. Bring it up for appeal, and so we can vote on it. That's really good.
You may want to have our conversations a little bit earlier then.
Yeah, yeah.
Because we, I think we voted right before you went, right?
Yeah, we need to give the district time to make their appeals.
Right.
As far as the timing goes, there's an eight-day window prior to the, to the conference. So we would wanna, yeah, to your point, we'd probably want to do it at an earlier meeting.
And if we feel strong enough, we should talk to our neighboring districts and kind of rally them to see what we're doing. So, you know, we can, I mean, there's nothing wrong with, I don't know if it's electioneering, politicking, there's nothing wrong with, you know, kind of talking before you vote, so.
That's right. Summary, Steve. Any other committees meet?
Yes, so the referendum committee met last week. And we can take a deep breath. We're about three-quarters of the way through with all of our projects, which is absolutely phenomenal. Countryside and Huff are essentially done. And the good news is, we will be able to have these, our students occupy their new classrooms before the end of the school year. It won't be right at the end of winter break. There's still a punch list, and there's still some things that need to happen. But definitely before the end of the school year, which is very exciting. So, you know, those are on time, or as close on time as they can be. And that's, you know, again, exciting that we've gotten there. Barrington High School, most of the discussion is sports-related. The multipurpose field is essentially complete. The baseball and Field of Dreams are essentially complete. And the good news is, they will both be occupiable in, in the spring semester. So our baseball and softball teams will be able to use their, their new fields. We'll be able to see spring ball, which I think everybody's very excited about. The tennis courts, the new tennis courts will not be done in the spring, or they won't be usable. So we will still use the old tennis courts for spring tennis. We will be having ribbon cuttings for all of these completed projects. So keep your ears open, because we certainly want our, our supporting community to come to these, as obviously we want our, our board to be there also. So we want to celebrate, you know, the successes that we've had. I want to mention briefly before I go on that there have been some significant obstacles over this last six months. Gravel strike, concrete shortages. And I just give kudos to our administration and to all the construction people, because they've, they've done the best they could, and they've, they've, you know, made up for, for lost time. And as a result, we're seeing the, the product out there, which is, you know, absolutely phenomenal. So again, I, I think we just have to really be so appreciative of not only the community to fund this, but the people who are actually doing the hard work, the gravel workers and the construction workers, because there's, there's some great work being done there. The main entrance, right now, if you look, it just looks like a lot of lights out there and, and a lot of stuff in the ground. But in the next couple of weeks, you're gonna start seeing things coming up, and actually some structure as the steel gets put down, and kind of the skin of what's gonna happen in the front. So although it may not look like there's a lot happening, there's a lot happening just to get the ground ready and to, and to prepare for what's really gonna be happening next. And just to kind of finish up here, Lions, North Barrington, Rose, and the Early Learning Center will be getting most of their work done over this next summer. But there will be some pre-work happening over the spring to get everything ready, so that they can kind of go in as soon as school's out and, you know, really boom, and start getting their work done, so we can, you know, keep everything on time as best as we can. So that's our referendum. And I just wanted to briefly mention Triple I also. Again, I thank the community and the board for allowing us to go, because it is, it's such a great experience. The thing I like about Triple I, as I've done over the last three or four years, is, is meeting other board members and kind of sharing best practices and comparing issues, how they're handling things, whether it's, you know, masking, or finances, or, you know, it's, it's just great to hear what other people are doing. The couple of programs that I went to, I thought were just phenomenal, really helping me to become a better board member. There was kind of a motivational speaker who talked about leadership and partnership, and how to, how to work with people. And I think we all could use that help, but I certainly know I can. And, and I just really, it was very eye-opening to hopefully try and implement some of the things that he recommended. I went to a half-day equity and service, which also was very good, just to see how other districts are doing their equity and, and what, I, I, I think we're actually ahead of most other districts. So I'm, you know, very proud of our district. But it was interesting to hear some of the resources that other districts have, and what they're trying to do to, you know, kind of take the deep dive and, and, you know, make some progress on, on these equity issues. And the last thing that I went to was a kind of a primer on collective bargaining. I'm gonna be working on our BEA contract, and this was very eye-opening and very helpful to me, being a novice in that. So that was another great thing that was very worth my time, the couple hours that I spent. So again, I appreciate the community letting me go, and the board, you know, allowing me to go also, because I thought it was very worthwhile.
Excellent. I was just gonna add one thing to referendum. I know Mr. Williams is gonna be having students out in that multipurpose field as soon as it gets warm enough, right? Be ready to go. So it's not just the athletic teams, but it'll also all the students at high school.
And I guess I do want to add, with like the Field of Dreams and the baseball, there's still gonna be some work being done around the field, you know, with cement, and now winter's here. So as long as the fields are playable, we're gonna ask the, you know, the parents to understand that it may not be the most comfortable setting until we really get everything done. And everything will get done, but there's still a punch list that will be happening in the spring. So if you go out there and you look and you see that the dugouts aren't done right, or the stands aren't quite done, it's all happening. It's just the fields were our first priority, because we want to get the players on the field, playing on their new field. So that was obviously the first priority.
And we won't let any students on those fields until it's safe to do so, right? But, but it will be happening, I think, pretty much on schedule, maybe even a little bit ahead of schedule for that multipurpose field, for all the students at the high school.
Steve, did you have any takeaways from the workshops you went to, other than the delegate assembly?
No, I will echo what Barry said. Thanks to the board for, you know, entrusting Barry Lee and myself with the opportunity to go. Thank you to the community for funding us and allowing us to, you know, do that development. I would, I would echo, pretty, like I said, pretty much what Barry said, as far as being able to network, being able to learn from others, and, you know, get a sense for what worked well, what hasn't been working well, and, you know, developing some, some relationships for folk, with folks who we can, you know, lean on. Because, you know, chances are, if we're having an issue or having a victory, somebody else will, you know, might have the same situation. And it'll be good for us to mutually benefit from each other's experiences. You know, for me, you know, I, I don't know if this was just the way we've coordinated our days, but I took very different courses from what Barry described. But each one, I felt like I learned something new with respect to, you know, how to be a better board member. So whether it was maximizing our ROI, yeah, shocking that I took that one right, or, you know, re-engaging the community, I think I took away something from each. And I'm, again, very grateful that I had that opportunity, because hopefully I can take some of the lessons learned and apply them here. And, you know, as I continue kind of coordinating my notes, you know, I'm, I'm happy to, or I'm looking forward to submitting some documentation to Dr. Hunt and others, actually, with, you know, some of the things that I learned and some of the resources that I think the district could benefit from. So, so thank you for calling that out, Sandra.
Appreciate you guys taking the time to do that, and your dedication to becoming even better board members. It's very much appreciated by this board, and I'm sure by the community as well. Any other committee reports? Next up is our consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Okay, before we do roll call, I'll ask if there's any discussion, and I'll read through what is on our consent agenda. We have minutes from November 15th, both opened and closed, and a revised personnel report. We're sure that's not a typo, no finance reports? No? All right. Any questions or comments? And everybody saw the revised minutes, right? Okay. All right, let's do a roll call. Barry Altshuler?
Yes.
Angela Wilcox?
Yes.
Erin Chan Ding?
Yes.
Sandra Bradford?
Yes.
Katie Carum?
Yes.
Steve Wang?
Yes.
All right, let's go ahead and a motion passes. Let's move on to our action items. Let's see, first action item, do we have a motion for the first action item?
Yes, it's been given to me. The reason I'm reading a motion is because this was given to us by our lawyer, so we just make sure it's worded exactly right. But I move that the board approve and authorize the superintendent or designee to sign the purchase and sale agreement for real estate, for the purchase of 1525 South Grove Avenue, Unit 104, Barrington, Illinois, and substantially the form presented to the board, and further authorize the board president, secretary, superintendent, or designee, and the board attorney to prepare and execute all documents necessary to effectuate this purchase.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, do you want to give us a brief overview, Dr. Hunt?
Sure, I think the board is familiar with the Barrington transition program and the current location of that program. It's a wonderful, dedicated staff that works with, works with our students kind of post-graduation and preparing for, you know, and working on life skills and transition. They have been in a current location on South Grove, I don't, five years, approximately? Two or three. So two or three. Okay, somewhere between two and five. And as we've kind of looked at enrollment and needs, we see a significant increase in enrollment over the next, you know, four years with those students. And they're already, I would say, at maximum capacity with space. So we had the good fortune of the unit next to us opening up. We have worked, Dr. Biden has worked to, I think, secure a very good price for that. And we're recommending that we move forward with the purchase of that property for the expansion of that program due to enrollment needs.
Will that space be occupiable, be able to be occupied right away, or do we have some work to do?
So I think the nice thing about the space is it has a lot of room for us to do what is necessary to best prepare it for students. So there, there is work, and essentially it's in studs at this time. I'm, I know we've looked at it internally with our staff, and we believe the vast majority of that work should be able to be accomplished internally. I don't want to commit Dr. Biden and his staff to that right now, as they balance a lot of things. But there will, there will be work necessary to get that ready for our students. And hope to have that and anticipate to have it ready to go for the opening of next school year.
We're capable of doing all of that work, board members. The question is whether we have the time to do all of that work and continue to be able to support and maintain our other facilities across the district while we have students in attendance. So we'll be balancing that out if we go forward with the purchase.
Any other comments or questions? All right, let's do a roll call. Erin Chan Ding?
Yes.
Sandra Bradford?
Yes.
Katie Carum?
Yes.
Angela Wilcox? Barry Altshuler?
Yes.
Steve Wang?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Do we have a motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement with the Village of Barrington for access of digital images from district cameras?
Dr. Winkelman has really worked on this agreement, but I'll sum it at a high level, and he can rescue me if I get too deep. But essentially, first of all, we should recognize and thank our community for safety and security was a priority with the referendum. Our new camera systems, as they come online, we have the ability to give access to our safety forces. So if they're responding to an incident, they can tap into that and, and view what is going on in the buildings. In reviewing the agreement, I think we've very appropriately kind of managed what level of access and when that would be appropriate. And we're recommending that the board approve the agreement to best be prepared in, in the event of an emergency.
Any comments or questions? All right, let's do a roll call. Katie Carum?
Yes.
Sandra Bradford?
Yes.
Erin Chan Ding?
Yes.
Steve Wang?
Yes.
Angela Wilcox?
Yes.
Barry Altshuler?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Do we have a motion to approve the BHS Athletic Program Donation Agreement? So moved.
Sure, this is a kind of a continuation of the fundraising efforts regarding the work that has taken place that Barry talked about behind Barrington High School. Some of those opportunities to enhance what we are able to provide for our student athletes, as well as athletes within the community. This recommendation specifically is for advertising along the Fields of Dreams baseball field. And I think it's one of, what do we say, 10 panels, 12?
12.
Yeah, one of 12 panels that are available, in case there's anyone else out there that's interested. And we appreciate, obviously, the donation of John Morrison, who's a realty group to support our students.
Comments or questions?
I just wanted, so what is gonna be out there? Is it gonna be what, the picture you showed us? Or, oh, okay, so it's the Broncos Phillies kind of, okay. I didn't know that was what was.
It's contained in the agreement, is what will be displayed on that panel.
Okay, gotcha.
And how long is the term?
Steve Wang? Angela Wilcox?
Yes.
Sandra Bradford?
Yes.
Erin Chan Ding?
Yes.
Barry Altshuler?
Yes.
Katie Carum?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Let's move into our discussion items. The first discussion item we have is on the Fine Arts Performing Arts Center update.
Thank you. While Dr. Biden and DLA are coming, coming forward, just maybe give you a little bit of background on, on this. We've certainly discussed it before at the board level. As the Board of Education is aware, within the referendum project that was passed, were some funds allocated directly to work related to the design of a fine arts center at Barrington High School. To be clear, that does not include the construction of, you know, a, a design. But I think the thinking is to better understand current conditions within that facility, understand needs from a programmatic standpoint, and then create a vision for the future to support not only what we're offering now, but what we may want to offer as we move forward in the future, as well as provides an opportunity to discuss how this could support the community at large. So I know Dr. Biden has done a lot of work in, on this to get us to this point. Really, the opportunity tonight is for the board to think about process and how to engage our community to make sure that we get to a point where you feel comfortable. So I'm not gonna steal all of the thunder in the introduction.
Your presentation's done, Dr. Hunt.
Yeah. I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Biden. And, board, this should be more conversational. Certainly feel free to ask questions as we go through.
Thank you, Dr. Hunt, thank you, board members. As we get started, I just want to begin by introducing Carrie Matlock to you. Carrie is the president of DLA, which is an architecture firm in the Chicagoland area that does primarily school design work. Talk more about her, and she'll talk about her, her background, her firm. But just wanted you to know who else is up here as we get going. So I've really got four items that we're hoping to cover tonight. First, just a bit of background to talk about, again, orient ourselves, why are we here, what are we talking about? We'll talk about DLA and their background and their expertise, along with the process that. We'll talk about DLA and their background and their expertise, along with the process that we're recommending that we go through as we think about the design work and consideration around our fine arts instructional and performing arts space. And we'll wrap up with next steps, which I know you're going to be shocked with this one. It's probably going to start with talking about getting board feedback, so. Just as you get ready. So just want to begin with our mission of empower personal excellence in every learner. And part of what we do here in Barrington is offer instruction around fine arts, as well as opportunities for students to engage in performing arts. And I'm sure that Mrs. Tylenstone would probably cite a lot of research for you about the benefits that that offers for our students, for their life experiences and their contributions to society. But we believe that this is an important aspect of empowering excellence in our learners. And some learners focus in some areas, others in different ones, and the fine and performing arts is an important part of what we do here in Barrington. Back when the board was thinking about Blueprint two twenty, and we're looking at all of the different projects that were out there, and some costs associated with those projects, the board did come up with a recommendation for a referendum for a hundred and eighty-five million dollars that included an allocation of some funds for doing a fine arts addition. That referendum, as you know, is not successful. In the second successful referendum, there was an amount, just a little bit under three hundred thousand dollars, that the board said, let's use that funds to round us out to an even one hundred and forty-seven million dollars, and let's get the community some more information. Because some of the feedback that we had received after the first referendum was, we need to be a little more comfortable understanding what we're talking about with respect to the fine and performing arts space. So let's get that. And so what we've intended is that all along, we're going to spend that money to start to do some design work that would provide concepts of what, you know, what might we do if we're going to do something with fine and performing arts? So as we've started that process, the first thing was, all right, let's review internally what are the objectives that we're trying to accomplish? And so I've listed here really what those four objectives are that we reviewed internally administratively as to what we're looking at doing, which is really, let's assess our instructional and performing arts spaces. What do we have? How much are those spaces being used? What are they being used for? You know, the conditions of those spaces. Let's engage our stakeholders to find out what their interests are. Let's talk about our future needs, and let's really engage in some visioning here about what do we want in Barrington, and what best suits the needs of our students? And based on that, let's look at some design options. So that was really what administratively we talked about and reviewed as what we're trying to do relative to this particular project. So we did that internally. And part of that then led to, let's identify a design partner to be able to help us do that. So as we went through that process, we took a look at architects, designers, architects who are active in the Chicagoland area that work with school districts on this kind of space. And there are many excellent firms that are out there. We're looking for a partner that both has a lot of experience focusing on fine and performing arts instruction and spaces, as well as a strong reputation for working with school districts to make the school district and community vision come alive, and also that has really high references and strong recommendations from other school districts for the work that they do. It so happens that DLA ticked all of those and had more experience and excellent references and reputation within the Chicagoland market. So in trying to figure out who's the right firm to work with, we tried to think broadly about that. And DLA is here, Carrie is here to talk with you, because we believe that they bring the right skills and experience to the table to really go through the process and meet the objectives that we've laid out for you. So the last point I've got on here is, you know, the other meeting objective. Well, we want to share with you where we are and what we're doing, and what we think the next steps are as we go through this process, and what could be as we try to go through this process. But it's really a focus on what, where might we end? And it incorporates, you know, so importantly, that involvement from stakeholders. And, you know, it's sort of like Dr. Hunt, I'm going to try not to steal all of Carrie's thunder on this. But, you know, in addition to sharing with you some background about herself and her firm, she'll talk about what we believe are some of the right steps to go through, which includes that assessment of our spaces, actually taking a look at other districts and what they have going on in terms of spaces. Then with an assessment of our existing space, then let's really get involved with our stakeholders and our community, our students, our staff. Let's talk with them about what might be, and Carrie will share with you her firm's experience in going through that kind of process, and what that might look like. And then delivering potential design options for the board to be able to consider. The, at this point, I can't tell you what those are. I can't tell you is that a renovation of our existing space? Maybe it is. Maybe that's all it is. Maybe it's a renovation with some new construction. Maybe it's all new construction. I don't know, and I think it's so important that together we work to figure out what are we trying to accomplish, because that will drive what the design options need to look like. So there's likely to be different kinds of designs, different price points associated with that. But I think that'll start to come out of the work that we're proposing that we do together. Questions so far? All right.
I've never had such an introduction.
Welcome to Barrington.
Thank you so much. A little bit about me is actually, I started my career down the road here in Barrington at Ruck Pate, my first year out of college, thirty years ago. So kind of interesting. I didn't think I'd be getting into educational design, but it stuck with me. And really, we have developed a great passion for doing this work, and found a home at DLA Architects shortly thereafter. And DLA has been in business for forty years now, coming up this February. And we have developed quite a niche in educational design. We are nationally ranked, top fifty in the nation for K-12 design, and this is what we do. Ninety-six percent of the work that we do is educational. And the work that we do is in Illinois, and it's very important to us. So Form Falls Learning is our design philosophy. And what that means is we truly believe the architecture of a school building should support and inspire learning. So much so that we take the time to learn about you. We design for you and not for our egos. So that's really important about us and who we are. Now I'm going to show you a little bit about the work that we've done in the way of instructional and performing arts spaces. Argo High School is a really nice example of this, because, one, it's very similar to what I've known to date about what you're going through. Just a little analysis of where they were at. They were landlocked in their existing high school, where you couldn't really expand. It was into a corridor, didn't really, courtyard, and it really didn't make structural sense and monetary sense. So we did a feasibility study for them to determine what the path forward would be. We don't come to the table with preconceived notions about what that should look like. We do an investigative kind of report on what your existing conditions are, which we did for Argo. And that's, and then we ended up with a little annex off of the back end of their building, where you can see on the right-hand picture where buses actually fit underneath there. That's a bridge going to their performing arts facility, which included a number of types of spaces. Performing arts, as well as history wall, lobby space, practice areas, instructional space, of course. And so many, it's actually a pretty large facility, but it worked out really well, and it was able to put everything together. And the flow that followed through there really worked. If you want to go on to the next one. Again, some images of some of the other spaces, instructional spaces and support spaces that we've worked on at Richards High School.
My high school district was two eighteen.
Really?
My, a couple of my siblings went to Richards. I went to Shepherd, because they built that, and it's a little closer to home. Pointing that out forward.
Write that down. Ridgewood High School, very interesting project. It was one of the first to use LED lighting, theatrical lighting. And so that was really neat and really an awesome project, LEED Gold certified. And again, a complete redo of the functionality of those performing arts and instructional spaces surrounding it. It's nineteen sixty-nine versus twenty-ten. That's a little funny note about this band room is that the windows on the building actually are, reflect the fight song for Ridgewood. So they're kind of play off of a musical. No, it's a little creative note. Lions Township High School on the north campus, hundred-year-old building. Again, landlocked, just a complete renovation of the existing space, no addition here, but an update of facilities and improving acoustics. And this is some nice bragging rights. Carmen De Leon, the Chicago Symphony Orchestra conductor. He did call Lincoln Way a home for quite some time, as their second home, rather, and approved of the spaces and the acoustical treatments there. We actually work with a number of consultants. We have worldly recognition in a number of forums that are pretty impressive. So we certainly bring them along with us to every one of these. So we've kind of really created an identity for performance spaces in K-12.
So board, we wanted to make sure that you heard a little bit about the chops of DLA.
I like that.
Bridget, was that pretty good there? I was drum major, actually, back in the day. But why don't you hear a little bit about the background, so that you knew the kind of credentials, I mean, the focus on K-12 education that DLA brings, as well as the depth of experience. Carrie, about how many of fine and performing arts spaces has your firm worked on?
Twenty to thirty, at least.
So as I asked around, firms don't have that level of experience. They've done some. They've done a few. Maybe they've done a handful. They've not done two dozen plus. And I think that's one of the great assets that DLA brings. But let's, wanted to just talk to you a little bit about that, and now get into really, I think, the meat and potatoes of what we wanted to talk about, which is really, what's the process that we've talked about?
Yes, architects always have processes, don't they? I'm sure you realize that you're up to here with process, I'm sure, but you're seeing the fruits of your labor, so that's great. The big part of the process is the analysis and the data gathering. And that's really when we hear, okay, we look, take a top-down review of everything, and we walk engineers through us, through your facility. We do an analysis of your acoustical evaluation to see. I understand you might be doing some audiovisual analysis currently, but this is different. This is an acoustician coming in and taking a look at how the sound works in those spaces and all the adjacent spaces. The flow and everything like that. So environmental reports, all that real detail stuff. And we really, and then we document that and look at that from a priority, and that's just what you have existing to date. And then the next is really, really, this is the fun part. This is really when we start to see what Barrington two twenty is all about and what you need and what you desire, and what your community has to say about this type of facility. And this is, so this is a really exciting part for us, and for me especially, because this is the fun part. We get to talk to your learners. We get to talk to your staff, and we get to talk to you and your community. And what methodology we utilize for that has yet to be exactly determined. We've done a number of variations. I trust in that. We work with varying communities throughout the Chicagoland area, and very intense community, heavily involved focus, and then some that are not so much. But we will work hard with you to understand your needs, and your administration's guidance will give us what we need in order to outline a great format for you.
Could you maybe give a thirty-second description of what happened at Lake Zurich with?
Oh, sure.
That you did there, which is very similar to what we're talking about.
Yes, with the pre-referendum planning and so forth, yes. We did town hall meetings. We did community walkthroughs. I did presentations personally to, you know, and tell them, okay, here's, show them, this is what we've heard. This is what we're suggesting based upon this feedback, and kind of stood there, answered questions, along with a number of other people in the community that might also, I saw one other room that was here before, Ryan, in the room, that he might have participated as well. But they are definitely, it was definitely a heavy involvement from our end, and that we helped in any way, shape, or form that we could. And certainly cost estimating in conjunction with their construction manager to allow for that as well.
And the product that comes out of that is actually fairly lengthy in terms of the, you know, copies of the dialogue. You can see some of the, some of the images here that provide some of that kind of information. But also, it's a fairly lengthy report that comes out, capturing all of that info, which then leads into some of the next work that we would be contemplating.
Right. And so, again, no preconceived notion of what this looks like. But hearing that, then we come up with this three-dimensional alignment of what those ideas might be. And we'll take a look at a variety of options for you. What's the least amount of impact to the district, and then a full amount of impact to the district? All within, you know, the constraints that we feel are appropriate to align with the community's desires and what you're already accustomed to with aesthetics and so forth, and functionality, and just the level of facilities that Barrington has already offered to the community. And but this is, and then we'll present that to the community, to the board. And once we get a direction on one final plan, then we'll move into a animation that you can utilize then for the referendum. So this is just, that's that Argo High School, very similar, and you can see a little bit of our talents here and how we can animate buildings and, just a quick snippet here. But it walks you through the lobby and takes you through to see those practice spaces and so forth. So really gives you an idea of what that might be able to look like. And we're pretty good at it. We can make it look just about as anything you'd like to see, so.
It's actually was Dr. Hunt conducting there.
Questions, board members?
I still have a next step slide, but so we can go there maybe even, if you'd like.
Can I ask one question?
Yeah.
I believe I asked this before, but these spaces become so technical, acoustically, lighting. How much of that is your expertise in house, and how much do you have to rely on outside experts and those relationships?
Well, that's very intricate, absolutely, but we're lucky enough to have an in-house expert. He's sitting with me tonight, Steve Wright. He's actually one of my partners in the firm. And he does a number, he's involved in every single one of these types of facilities that we do, and has developed quite a niche on his resume for this. But we also work with consultants for this, acoustical, theatrical, you know. Certainly, electrical is huge in this, and mechanical for the, just making sure that the HVAC system is not loud and dinging to the important stuff that you're doing inside the spaces.
Which may be for an auditorium or for other instructional kinds of spaces.
Absolutely.
Tend to be a little bit larger for some of the programs that we have.
And the shape of those spaces is really important, so it really comes down to also the architecture. And they're involved all along the way, and Steve really guides that process. So it's nice to have that expertise, because a lot of people cannot say that. It is really, really unique. Performing arts facilities are really unique in how they function and how they flow. And understanding the importance of that is really, is really a strong attribute to have when you're designing these.
So from a next steps, you know, the first item, I warned you, was going to be, you know, Board of Education feedback. So we certainly want to gather that, and we think that, you know, following step is based on board input. It might be a logical step that we would look to contract for services to support this work, which would be followed by a kickoff of the project, periodic status updates that would come back to the board. We expect that the work will take approximately six months in sort of soup to nuts to progress through those different steps. And then there would be the opportunity for the board in approximately six months, so by the end of June, to be considering, here's multiple design options, which would then lead to a subsequent animation, and board conversation about what you choose to do next. Retaining DLA for this work would then, and that would be the conclusion of this particular project if the board. If the Board chose to do something beyond that, then we'd have that opportunity then to determine what is the path for that, what is funding for that, what partner are we working with and, and so forth, as we've done with other work that we're doing. So Board, that does conclude the formal presentation that we had and would love to answer questions that you have or take any other feedback that you have for us.
So when you mentioned that there would be two different conceptual design solutions, how do you, are those just based on, you know, after you review the facility and kind of look at the acoustics and all of that, is it, are they relatively comparable? Are these at different price points? Do the conceptual designs look at, you know, repurposing current, building new, creating, like, how do you?
It's a great question. We actually may have like a dozen design solutions. And then we'll narrow it down to three. They usually range in different small, medium, large. And that's usually the, it gives then you all a choice to make, you know, how, how aggressive do we want to be? How much of a problem is this and do we really need to solve that, you know, whatever it is? If it's acoustics or, you know, functionality or whatever the case may be. So, no, we do like to give small, medium, large kind of decisions to be had.
I think that's good, especially as to the feedback of that from the community, the person that our requirement was. You know, a lot of questioning as far as how far did we look into, you know, reusing parts of the facility and were there other ways that we could repurpose, maybe if, you know, the current auditorium is not going to be the main auditorium, but could it still be used? Something that we discussed when we, again, put forward this referendum initially was that does, you know, kind of play into this whole financial picture. It's difficult to estimate what that would be, but since you're going out and talking to community members and gathering all this information, I wonder if that's any part of the report that you put together as far as, you know, estimated potential revenue? You know, I mean, I think our community always is looking for, you know, community input for helping to upgrade and things like that, but then also what are just the pragmatic ways that the cost can be offset just by, you know, utilization outside of D-220? Is that ever part of your assessment or something that you can speak to?
We definitely have, most of the spaces that we create like this are just that, huge community use, right? And, and not only, I mean, you being a unit district, certainly, I think that you're going to see a lot of that use come from, you know, your, your other schools as well. But I definitely, definitely see this as something that the community would, would want to use and that you would, you would certainly have some type of fee associated with that. We, we could get that data from our existing clients to ask, to ask those questions, to give you that. I'm assuming you have something like that currently and we could probably work together to get, work something.
Yeah. It was certainly possible to, to inquire from some other districts about, you know, space that, that you've now redeveloped and what does that look like? I mean, not everyone's going to get the CSO coming in and using the space, but there may be other, maybe other groups that want to come in. And, you know, certainly we look at all of those opportunities to be able to leverage that. And I think we, as we do with our, all of our spaces, we would focus on our district needs, taking priority and laying that out and then making it available. Absolutely. So we can try to, we can try to collect some of that data and provide some level of information back for the Board.
Well, and the fact that you're mentioning Lake Zurich and obviously your familiarity with that, I think that that is on kind of a micro level, when you hear about town and stuff at this time of year, when you hear of, you know, Barrington organizations that are renting out Lake Zurich for their, you know, their programs and the shows and things like that because of the space. So I would think that there'd be some information regarding, you know, the pieces of speed and, you know, what that looks like.
Absolutely.
Just to help, all this other information piece will be, this is your.
Sure, sure.
Does the CSO actually practice at Lincoln Way?
They used to.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Oh, interesting.
Wow.
So, all right, so Dave, first question. We have, I said about $300,000 from referendum, have we spent any of that yet or are we still?
No.
Nothing's been spent yet?
No.
Do we still have that?
We, we are, we are poised to do that, so, you know, we had so much referendum construction and design and construction work that was at the front of that process. We didn't really have the bandwidth to kick off this particular project.
Oh, I understand that. So we haven't spent anything yet?
So, so we haven't. And so as we have been talking about it over the last six to 12 months, like, okay, when do we think we can get that going? Let's see, we can start to develop some background information, let's talk about it internally as we get into the late summer, into the fall, and let's be able to be prepared to come to the Board with a plan as to what does this look like to be able to utilize those funds that have specifically been set aside for this work? And so that's what we're proposing for you tonight.
Have you been up in our auditorium yet to see what's upstairs and?
Yes.
Okay. I'm interested because.
Upstairs, downstairs.
Well, I think that drives the need, seeing what's up there and saying, we gotta do something about this, you know, so. So we just talked about the greenhouse and how we had outside money that came and helped us with that. And as everybody knows, we've, we've had outside sources with the sports. I'm hoping we're going to be able to find some outside money to take some of the pressure off of our taxpayers to maybe have the blankety-blank lobby or the, you know, I don't want any names because I don't know who we have yet, but.
It's the offshore lobby.
That's great. Do you anticipate we would do that after a referendum, before the referendum? When, when do you think we should start looking into fundraising?
What I suggest, which suggests to the Board is that we need to do some of this underlying work to figure out what do we, what's the conditions of what we have and what are our needs and what are we trying to accomplish? And I think it's premature at this point in time to be trying to think about that because I couldn't tell you, will we have a new lobby? I, I don't know until we actually get through that process of visioning, you know, building that shared vision within our community about what do we really want with respect to our instructional and performing arts programs? It's hard for, for DLA to come up with, here's what those options look like. I think at the time that we've got some ideas about, here are some design options, then we can start to explore at that point in time to have conversations of where do we go next? You know, where's the Board want to go next? Is it appropriate to have a referendum? When would that be? Is this, which design option does that, you know, might, might be the one that you want to focus on? How do you want to deliver that? And then what might be some of those things, whether it's funding the existing design that is being proposed to the community or whether it's add-on, some of the things that we did with our athletic fields where, here's the basic design and, but we could enhance it in certain ways by doing some things. So, but I think right now it's a bit premature to do that because we've got no idea what, what are we talking about? But once we've got that assessment done and, and some options in front of us, I think that's a great time to, for us to then have those conversations on how do we want to move this forward.
Yeah.
And the process may spur some of those conversations. It builds excitement along the way and the engagement of it.
No, no, that makes sense, that makes sense. And of course, remember, we, we're really emphasizing now conversations with our community and getting our superintendent out there and I think we're going to have to really redouble our efforts to express to the community our need. Like, this is needed, you know, and, and it's, it's safety, it's, it's being up to date, it's et cetera, et cetera. So, I mean, you know, we, we really want to have all our, our i's dotted and t's crossed and, you know, really make sure that we do a better job than we did with the first referendum where we knew we had the need, but I don't know if we expressed it as well as we could have and I don't know that we communicated because the community told us, you didn't really convince us we need this, so.
Well, I totally agree with you, Kipari, because I think, I wasn't in a run. It was like 30 million or something, I'm just, I could be making that up, but the feedback I kept hearing was 30 million of what? What, so this is, I think, such a great first step to your point for the community and for potential investors because that was a large number of pie in the sky, what were we going to get for it? So I love the idea of having the three, the multiple options and then we can even figure out where the comfort level is within the community too at that point also. So I like the different options here.
Okay, I have two questions for you. The first one, I noticed that you have a lead associate and you have architects who are lead certified. And we also, through our referendum design, learned a lot about universal design and how important that is with regard to access for people of all abilities and disabilities. How, what's DLA's approach to environmentally friendly spaces, spaces that are, embrace universal design from the start, especially, especially to make a space inclusive for everyone? So what's kind of the?
It's the focus of every design we ever do.
Okay.
I can't say it.
Couldn't be more straightforward than that.
Well, thank you so much, I appreciate that. My second question, and I'm like so curious about this, but there's an amazing photo of you on the website in pig slippers, and I have a vested interest because my very first email address was lovepiggies@AOL.com. And you said that you would talk about the story of the pink pig on your team if we asked you. So what's the story behind the pink pig for DLA?
I love that you asked me that question. You know, we don't have a lot of time, so I'll do the short version of this. But really, we have adopted a pink pig culture in our office and it really stems from a Disney story, Disney World. And it's a story about a little girl who lost her pink pig. Have you heard this at all? Well, the little girl loses, she goes to Disney with her family, they live in New York, and she loses her pink pig. And it was something that, as you know.
A lovey.
It is something that's very important and so she has.
I have pink pigs too.
Right. So she has a little meltdown on the way home because they don't find the pink pig, right? She loses it and then, so the mom calls the, the place and, and asks, you know, did you, did you find it? So this is a story about an employee's search for this pink pig and they found it. And it was in, it was just under something, under the bed or whatever in the hotel room, but instead of just returning it, sending it a package, they take the pink pig to meet Mickey and they take a picture. And they take them to go on the teacups and so forth. So what happens is they send a little bit of a diary back with the pink pig and a little note saying, thank you for having me extend my vacation and I really enjoyed this and, you know, do you think the mom's going to go back to Disney? Right? So this is our approach to how we treat clients. We want to create that same type of experience for our clients, which is why we have clients that last 10, 20, 30-year relationships and so forth. So that is our goal, always. And so it is our goal to make these long-lasting impressions upon you so that you always know that DLA is going to be your architect.
Imagine you, do you have pink pigs?
Everywhere.
Everywhere.
You're teaching my Christmas tree.
Thank you for that.
Awesome. I had a couple of questions too, if there's, did you? So if I remember correctly, Bridgette, you can correct me, but I believe we have utilization of our auditorium today of more than 360 days of the year. So, and I know that's not probably all fine and performing arts. So what part of, can you tell us a little bit about how you involve the other, other interested parties in this space?
Absolutely. Every, every place in the vicinity of, of that, of the performing arts spaces and the ancillary spaces and the instructional spaces surrounding it will be at the table. That's our intention, is to talk to them.
And I think that becomes a collaborative work with the administrative team and with DLA to talk, you know, as we do the assessment about what spaces do we have and how are they being used, we build out that information about who's in the space and what are they doing there, which allows us then when we get to that stakeholder engagement to be able to invite everyone to come to talk about it. And, you know, we've, we've got a really talented team led by Mrs. Tylston with our fine and performing arts that, that really have their fingers on the pulse of much of what we do. We have the high school staff. So we'll be able to identify that and bring those folks in to participate in the work that we're doing, to think about what is the future that we'd like to see here in Barrington.
So I'm sure Board members have ideas of who those special interest groups might be. Or other places around the high school might have some as well. How do we get those to you, Dr. Ryan?
So, thank you for that transition question. So, so what, what, what I'd like to do with Board support is to be able to bring back for you at the next Board meeting a contract to retain the services of, of DLA. On Board, if you're supportive of that and we're able to contract with that, what we'll do administratively is start to form, as we look back at those steps of what's involved, start to form, what is the, the team that's going to lead this? And I would encourage you, if you, if you've got particular interested parties, you can send them to Dr. Hunt, send them directly to me. And then as we begin our work and our assessment, we will make sure that we understand and recognize who's, who's involved and engaged, make sure that if we haven't gotten that name or that organization in some other way, we'll be able to double check to make sure that they're involved in the process. Does that answer your question? Thank you.
I think it also emphasizes that, that even though it wasn't on the last referendum to, to build or renovate, you know, it does remain a high priority for this Board. So I want to emphasize that as well. So please, as, as Board members, if you've got ideas and special interest groups and so forth, let's make sure we get those, those to Dr. Hunt and Dr. Ryan. And as a parent who's been going to shows for the past couple of decades here, I sure have some input on the acoustics.
And the comfort of the seats.
And the comfort of the seats. I've seen even other Board members' children perform there and, so seriously, I think there's a lot of comments from the community that I know we're going to want to hear. So thank you very much.
And Board members, separate from this particular work, just so you know, we are working to see if there are some short-term things that we can do to improve the acoustics in the auditorium specifically, because we know that is important for our community and particularly if you want to go and hear performers, you want to be able to go and hear the performer. So we're actually working a project right now to see if we can do some improvement there.
Hopefully before Fiddler on the Roof at the end of February.
We're, we're seeing if we can, we're trying to make that happen. For, for this project, very excited with your support, like to bring the DLA team contract for you. I think we've got the right team in place, the right folks working on this, so. Board, do we have your support to bring something at the next Board meeting?
Yeah.
Great. Thank you, everyone.
Will you bring the pink pig with you?
Oh, I will. I've got a number of them. We actually have M&amp;M's, better pink pig M&amp;M's.
Oh, is that right? Oh, my gosh.
Nice.
Thank you for coming out. Thank you for coming out.
All right, so next up we have, we're not done yet, guys. We have a couple other discussion items. Legislative priorities is next.
Yeah, so a lot, a lot of pressure. I'd like to invite Bridgette Everson, Executive Director of EdRed, forward to, to share a little bit about EdRed. The, the district has been a active member in EdRed for some period of time. We'll jump into the legislative priority conversation here in a little bit, but I thought with some newer Board members, with me being new and kind of moving on to the Board at EdRed, it'd be a good time for us to maybe have an update, learn a little bit of, make sure we're all on the same page with the organization. So thank you for your patience. I did give her the opportunity to come late.
You did, you did. The record grew.
She said she wanted to be here for the full Board member. We'll probably test that here as we go, but.
I just have to say before you even start though, like, that was a record, guys. All those students stayed for a very long time. So that was pretty impressive.
I've been to quite a few Board meetings and that is the most in terms of students being present that I've seen. It was pretty impressive. And I appreciate being here. It really, I was telling Dr. Hunt and Janine, you know, it really helps ground the work that I do and puts it in context for the reason why I do what I do. So my name's Bridget Peach, I'm the Executive Director of EdRed. We've been around for about 50 years. We just celebrated 50 years last January. And essentially, my role is to be your voice in Springfield and to run interference to make sure you can do your jobs without. make sure you can do your jobs without legislators getting involved, without there being a benefit. So I put together a presentation. I know it's getting late, so I'm, I'm going to highlight the initiatives I think would be of most interest to you as board members and to your district. I did hear a few mentions throughout that I'll tie in to the work we're doing. But I know your focus is how to leverage your district in terms of advocacy. And that's what, what I'm here to help you do. So I will be going through our legislative initiatives for this upcoming year. This is not an exhaustive list of what we're working on. This is simply the four directions and proposals we have on the table right now. Our list of legislative items is much longer than this. We have plenty of topics, including school vouchers. We have an advocacy plan right now to work with our districts who are seeing an influx of new arrival students from Venezuela. We have quite a few districts who are experiencing that, trying to find added funding to be able to support those students. We're also working on topics including literacy and the educator shortage. So like I said, this is not exhaustive. These are just the initiatives that we have proposals for that we're proactively working to advance. So the first, for, for those who are a little less aware of, of EdRed's history, we really had a very finance-heavy focus for years and years and years. In recent years, we have tried to open that focus to include much more than just finance. Although, as, as I'm sure many of you know, money is what, what runs the district. And so we need that. And so we want to make sure the process is, is equitable and fair to school districts. But we do have an initiative this year of property tax reform in a few different ways. I'm going to focus on TIF reform because that is something that our districts, especially in Cook County and up in Lake County, experience the consequences of. So we're looking to move forward a proposal that will give school districts a bigger voice at the table. Right now, there is not a requirement for school districts to approve a proposed TIF, which has the life of 23 years. And so that's a lot of money that is left at the table without adequate input from the school districts. So we are working on a proposal with Senator Gillespie to create a requirement and codify best practices with having all taxing bodies at the table and in agreement with a TIF being proposed. We know, you know, if you're, you've been keeping up with local news, Arlington Racetrack is looking to become a TIF for the Bears. That's going to be a lot of money that's left on the table and not going to the local school districts. So there are certain proposals that we know are moving forward quickly because of this proposal. They want to get it in before this goes into effect. But we'll be working on that this spring to make sure that the school districts have a louder voice at that table. And like I said, all of these initiatives will impact different school districts, so I'm going to spend more time on others just based on time. So the next one I really want to highlight and spend some time on, it's our professional development mandated training relief proposal. And, and one of the resolutions you mentioned, Steve, from I was a mandates review committee. That actually was an EdRed initiative last year that we worked really hard on with the committee and worked with Lake Forest on, who put forth that resolution. And this initiative really came from those conversations on how can we get the legislature on board with reviewing mandates? It's very hard to work with a bunch of legislators who believe they have very great ideas and want all school districts to implement them now. So because of that, we really wanted to narrow our focus. And we figured the best way to do that is with trainings. This is really a very, very real-life, easy-to-understand for legislators. They know with, with recent current events, we've seen a push for more training in the classroom, which is not a bad thing. But no trainings have come off the books. So they just keep adding on. And so what we're looking to do is consolidate what's currently on the books into five categories and tie that to the certification process. So right now, the districts are required to keep track of every single employee's trainings. That's a lot. And so by tying it to their certification, this will actually shift that responsibility to the educator and give them portability. So when they decide, "I, I really want to go to this district within the state," they can actually take that training with them. They don't have to start all over when they get to that new district. So that's why we have the teachers unions on board with this. They're very excited about this. They see this as a real good change to how the current system is working. We also are looking to create, like what that resolution recommends, is a proactive way of looking at future proposals. We know these suggestions aren't going to stop. They haven't, they're not going to. So we need to create a process where we can review these suggestions. So when we have a recommendation made of sexual harassment training, we can look at it, okay, what's currently being done in this space? What can we tweak? What can we add? Instead of having these very static trainings, we really want it to be dynamic. We want it to be updated. We want to give our educators the best training possible without overloading their schedules, which are already really, really busy. So this is something we're working, working forward on. And I would love to say this is going to get done, but this is an ongoing conversation with a lot of groups. This is a big ask of the legislature. I've had a lot of conversations where legislators get very defensive because they think, "You're making it so we can't pass anything and that's not our intent. We just want to make sure it's very intentional, purposeful, and beneficial to the school districts." So that's our, our second initiative. The next initiative is a clear and present danger reform. Right now, there is a requirement of all school administrators to report a clear and present danger within 24 hours of it occurring. Essentially, what this does is it communicates to the police a concern of a threat so that they can take appropriate action to be able to look at an individual. So it's, it's the communicate, the formal communication between school districts and the state police and local police. There's a lot of gaps. There's not even a real definition for what a clear and present danger is. And so we're really looking to improve this process so it can be used as an adequate school safety tool. And we want to work within this process that's already created. So there's a few things we're looking to do. The first and, and most critical, in my opinion, is creating a resource guide. So having the state police, the state Board of Education come together, see what questions exist. Based on the conversations I've had and what the state police is reporting, there's very few reports actually filed by school administrators. And the perception is they just don't feel confident or comfortable using this tool. So we want to leverage that to be able to be accessible for all school administrators. The other piece is confidentiality. With districts, especially downstate that are much smaller, have smaller communities, there's definitely hesitancy when it comes to filing a form that could potentially be released to the public. So we want to codify that confidentiality, strengthen that. And then finally, we really want to bring local law enforcement into this process. Right now, this is a process that takes place between the school district and the state police. But we know that our local law enforcement know the community, know the school district, they know that best. And so that's really where we want to make sure the communication is, is structured around. So that's what we're currently working on with school safety. I'll get into some of the other areas we're looking at through our committee, but that's our, our current proposal under the umbrella of school safety. And this next initiative actually impacts your district in terms of your high school. We're looking to create a requirement for community colleges to share remediation data with their member high schools in real time. This is happening for a lot of community colleges, they're already doing this. But there are still a few that aren't sharing this data. And so to help improve student learning, high schools need this data in real time to be able to make adjustments, see if there's patterns, see if there's trends. And so codifying this requirement will really hold community colleges accountable, but also help high schools really customize the learning experience, see what's going on in real time, instead of getting data from two years ago that's not going to really help them make adjustments. So these are our member committees this year. So we have two very large topics. We have one on special education funding, then we have another one on school safety. And for our purposes, I want to highlight our school safety committee because one of the resolutions, once again, that you mentioned talks about that school safety fund. That was, I believe, Gray's Lake, I don't remember the number. Kathleen Conlon-Wasick sits on our board and she was the author of that resolution, asking for some transparency and some support from the state on this very expensive technology that our districts are having to, to implement. They're figuring out how to do it. They're taking away from other services to add to that fund. So that's something we're, we're working through at the school safety committee. We're also looking at what are the best practices in that field and how does this all tie into mental health? So what I like to say is our committees really translate and, and, and move into our initiatives. That's how we get our ideas. We get the, in the, in the field background and input. And that really informs the work we do moving forward. I, I know you mentioned there's a firearm dealer location, you know, expanding that location. That'd be something we talk in the committee about. But we're really looking to move all of this forward and have really good conversations with our legislators about it and, and being flexible in where that conversation goes. Because all of these are great ideas, but they might not be perfect. And so we really want to collaborate with our districts as well as our legislators. And I know, Dr. Hunt, I tried to go fast and get everything in there. But I know you've got some legislative priorities. So I'll stop. If there's questions, I'm happy to answer those as well as give some feedback or, or any kind of insight I can into the work you're doing.
Talk about time of year and why we're kind of having this conversation now. And I know your life changes dramatically in January, so just...
Even now, it's, it's pretty, it's pretty, pretty wild. So the Illinois State Legislature operates on a spring session calendar. So we just finished the end of the cycle, is how I put it. So coming up, we see the lame duck session at the beginning of January. And what that means is it's the last week of this current general assembly. The, the people that you voted for in November will be sworn in the second week in January. So this is the final, first week of January is the final week to get anything done under the previous general assembly. Once those folks get inaugurated, that's when you have your committee hearings, that's when bills get filed. This last general assembly, we saw 400 bills filed that had to do with education, which was a lot. But we, we definitely saw post-COVID, a really big influx of education bills. And so we expect to see that again this year. And in January is really when we see all of those actually get filed. And we have the opportunity to make our stances, share our thoughts with the legislature and testify committees, have you all fill out witness slips and activate. And so that's why this conversation right now is so critical, because we have an opportunity in January to file bills, to comment on what's proposed by the legislature. Yeah. I didn't start singing "It's Just a Bill." I want you to notice that.
I was singing in my head.
That was great.
That was very true.
Yeah, that was awesome. Maybe we throw up our priorities and see which pages...
Do I, do I need to...
They're all in there. We've already talked about most of them.
Do I need to unplug?
You know, the only thing that I noticed that we don't really have in ours was that...
Remediation data sharing?
That's a new one, yeah.
I think, I think that would be great for us to...
So I think we currently have that relationship in place.
So they, they are doing that with us in real time?
It's good for my purposes to know that.
Yes.
Yeah.
So we use with Harper College, the model partnership agreement as it relates to courses like transitional math and transitional English. So we are part of a partnership with 211, 214, and Harper called Nexus. And so we have a separate agreement through them and we go through all that data every year.
Majority of, of colleges do that. I mean, it's, it's really not a big burden. No, depends who you talk to. Our take is that it's not that much of a burden. But we know that there are districts around here that aren't getting that and don't, they have a good relationship with the colleges, but the college is kind of slow to share that data. And it's best practice, we should be sharing that data. There should be communication back and forth.
Right, it would help them as well, in the future.
And we also know the Black Caucus, back in early COVID days, did propose their, their, their education pillar and included that. And I think there's a data transparency piece here of this will allow us to see what students from what backgrounds are funneling into their remediation system because we know there's a trend there.
To take this conversation more locally, one, thank you very much for being here and talking about EdRed. And we certainly love...
I need to close this.
Could you change over to my computer?
I'm so bored. Angela and I sat down, we looked at prior years, we looked at some of the other districts. I wanted EdRed, I wanted Bridgette to be here to talk about the focus areas for, for them and why it's relevant now is exactly what was just talked about. We're going to start seeing legislation filed and we're going to want to respond to that. And obviously, EdRed represents a large group and we also, you know, we represent the community of Barrington. So we, we want to kind of dovetail those initiatives and that work. I would anticipate possibly doing kind of some kind of legislative breakfast or luncheon where we try to invite in our local representatives and talk about the things that are priorities to the district. So we don't need to finish this tonight, but we need to get some input from you. Angela, I took a kind of a first swipe at this and happy to, I don't, I don't think I'm going to read them to you, you've had them. But I, I think there's an emphasis on local control, relaxing of state mandates. Something that I, I worked, you know, in, in Ohio on is, is there a way to get exemptions from mandates? Can, can you, from an achievement standpoint, perform your way out of mandates? So things of that nature. And there's other things that have been around in the district that we brought forward, this idea of TIF reform, which you, you've talked about as well. So I don't want to read this to the board, but I'd love, you know, feedback, Angela. I don't know if there's something specific you wanted to talk about.
Yeah, I would just say that we, we try to bring forward issues that we've talked about as a board in the past. We did take out a few things that don't seem to be current hot topics in Springfield, like, you know, freezing, tax, you know, so...
Property tax freeze that comes up every year.
That had been in there in the past. We took that out. Things that we've already accomplished individually as a district, we took out. We tried to make it very Barrington-specific and not, you know, really the EdRed community as a whole. And, but yeah, I'm curious of your thoughts. We've looked at a few other districts and tried to kind of cherry pick some of their good languages.
Reuse.
EdRed had the clear and present danger reform as part. I know we have a pretty good relationship with our local law enforcement. Is that anything that we needed to look at for our priorities?
We've got security and safety.
We do have school security, yeah, but...
I hadn't really even heard of, I mean, to be quite honest, I hadn't heard of that type of requirement yet.
And that's one of those, and that, that's a perfect example. You're not the only one. And I think there's definitely some education that needs to be done on it. And that's something that I've, I've talked with my colleagues in the state police on is how do we make sure, you know, administrators know it's a requirement? There's other, you know, public health, you know, officials are also required. But if you don't have the information, how are you going to file it confidently? And so we really want to work, work through that. And that's something we're looking, we'll probably move that first week in January that will keep everyone updated on. But we want to work within the process that already exists and we know there's gaps. So we're looking to, to really fix that.
Do we want to add that to here? Do we want to add some language there? Is that what I'm hearing?
Craig, in or Steve, I'd love for you to weigh in on this. I want to say, I don't know that this is a local issue for us due to the relationship, but I, that may not be the case. So you have a little more history here.
Sure. So our administrators are aware of the form and we have trained our administrators on the form and we have filled out this form, not regularly, but there are occasions that have occurred in our district that we have filled out this form.
So is that, is the current process a hindrance to us in any way or...
I actually, as I read through the recommendations here, and I see merit in, in what's here because I think there's always the need for more guidance and clarity and confidentiality. And when you're filling out this form and making sure administrators have all those tools at their disposal when they're doing it.
That's good to hear. So maybe we could consider aligning our language a little bit more with EdReds?
And I've got, I can share the, the actual draft and our, we've got a one pager on it that has some clearer language that I can share. I'm happy to do that.
Maybe I'll play with that, school safety bullet to include that language. I'll circulate it back to the board and then we'll talk about next step. it back to the board and then we'll talk about next steps.
Okay, that's good.
Okay.
That sounds good.
Thanks so much. That was really great.
Appreciate it.
Dr. Hunt, Janine, they have my information. So if there's anything else I can do, if there's follow-up questions, I'm, I'm always here. If not physically, virtually. So feel free to reach out. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, so next discussion item. Last meeting, we talked about preparation for our committee of the whole meeting in January. Is there anything that folks would like the staff to prepare in addition to what has been prepared in the past for the meeting in January? I don't know if you guys want to go through what thing to, to share with us?
Go through historical.
I'm sorry, I wasn't exactly prepared for that. But normally, what we do is try to provide some perspective on where we are during the course of the year. We talk about budget assumptions. We run through, there's a, a normal list document that provides what are assumptions as we take a look at the following fiscal year. So in January, we'll be talking about the 23-24 year. And we'll be able to run through a variety of assumptions around revenue and generation of revenue, and also about expense levels. So for example, looking at this year, we assumed a flat spending on supplies purchased services, those items relative to the prior year. That was excluding new funds that were coming in for grant dollars. But that was one of our planning assumptions. That then drives the budget. So, so what I would be prepared to show you in January is what, from the business office perspective, what we think might be appropriate types of assumptions, and what a five-year forecast looks like based off of those assumptions. Normally, what we've done then is had a dialogue around what are the assumptions that the board would like us to use, and what does that financial model look like? And then there's an opportunity for bringing that model back to the board. Hopefully, we'll be able, depending on the, the nature of board input, may be able to model that. At the committee of the whole, I'll be able to show you what that forecast looks like. And then based on that, final version would go out to you. And that's what we will actually then use to guide the budget development that we will do as we work through the spring process of developing a budget for the district. So usually, we come with, here's sort of where things are, here's what we think about the economy, here's what seems to make sense. Of course, Board, as you might know, I do a little bit of that modeling behind the scenes in preparation for that, to try to figure out how does some of this stuff play out. We will have some unknowns that we'll be facing as we get into January. Most notably is that we will have, we will not have a BEA contract in place at the time that we'll be having that conversation. You know, that, that does drive, you know, part of our costs, actually a fair large part of our costs. So I don't know exactly what that will look like, but we do have BSEO contracts in place. So we'll, we'll have some of that information. But that's more of what we'll be able to talk about at that time.
When is the data available?
It is January.
Fourth Tuesday in January.
January 24th.
We have that on our list already, right? Okay. Okay, so is there, so if there's anything outside of what Dr. Byne just described that anybody would like to have prepared, I mean, now we just put some time on this agenda. Out of that meeting, we might want to talk about what adjustments we might want to make, if any, based upon the model.
And this may not be the right venue, but there's been some talk of not doing our full levy for the next year, which would, half of it would be for 22, 23. The other half would, would impact our 23, 24. So do we want to look at what happens if we choose to do a zero levy? I mean, show us where $3 million or whatever might come from. I mean, is that something we want to know? Is that-
I've got it on my list. Absolutely.
So we're talking about that for 23, 24, preparing that?
Correct, correct. Showing us what, what would that mean? I mean, there's, you know, not, not to cartboard the horse, but I think there's some understanding here that it won't affect programming. And I think it probably would, but I'd like to hear from you whether we could take our budget and lock off $3 million and say, okay, community, we're not going to, you know, raise taxes for, for schools for this next year.
From a timing perspective, please keep in mind that the, the next board meeting is where the board will consider adopting a levy for the next year, next calendar year, right? We've got this weird phase, you know, we're not quite in sync between calendar year and fiscal year. But our obligation is to adopt a levy and have it on file with the county clerks by the last Tuesday in December. So December 27th is when we need to have that in place. So, Board, if, if we get into January, we'll have already adopted a levy for this next year. So just, I just want the board to keep that in mind. I certainly would be able to do some, you know, to talk about that for a year from now, as we, as we think ahead to the 23 levy, which the board would be considering 12 months from now, which would affect the 23, 24, and 24, 25 school years. But just from a timing perspective, right now, that, the 22 levy that will bring revenue in for this fiscal year and next fiscal year would need to have already been adopted by the board and filed with the county clerk.
But to be clear, if the board wants to see those things, having that much timing is more appropriate than trying to do it now. So at the committee of the whole, you want to talk about thresholds, it's not, you know, a percentage of the levy, but it's thresholds of, you know, dollar amount and what that would look like in terms of things we talk about, we could bring that.
Well, because the reality is, we're looking at another 5% levy at the next-
Right now, you know, CPI is running high. And the, you know, one of the assumptions, quite frankly, the most important assumption in terms of financial modeling on the revenue side is, what is the assumption, what is the assumption around CPI? Now, I get really two things, Board. You know, we've, you know, we talk about what CPI is. And, you know, by the time we get to the committee of the whole meeting, I think we'll, we'll have the inflation number. But right now, inflation's above 5%. So, you know, I think, you know, our limiting rate, again, would be a 5% increase for next year. But what we can model is a whole variety of things, right? So that might be the, the inflation assumption, but that doesn't have to be the budgeting assumption, or the planning assumption, the modeling assumption that, that we would have. So, you know, I think we can, you know, meaningfully talk about that. But that would drive the 23 levy a year from now for those other couple fiscal years.
I think even last year, we did do a model of zero. So maybe we want to do that again?
Yeah, I agree. You know, I'm sorry, I have a question, Sandra. For that January 24th meeting, I think I read this wrong, to be honest with you. I see it as written as the committee of the whole. But are we, excuse me, are we mirroring the process that we took for the October 18th meeting, where there was a segment, so obviously, we have some work to do with respect to the budget. But are we going to provide a segment at the end where we're able to engage with community members and perhaps engage and speak to the budget, either before or, well, actually, in my mind, what makes the most sense is before we go through a process as a board to talk about, you know, what assumptions we want made in the, in the upcoming budget.
We will have a public comment at every, you know, a public comment at every board meeting, but-
But is it, is it a option?
October 18th, is that when we did, or is that when we were at station?
Correct.
Yeah.
When we had the presentation from Dr. Hunt's, and then we allowed for a Q and A, rather than public comment, we allowed for Q and A. And then we also provided a timeframe for, you know, one-on-one or two-on-one meetings with community members.
Yeah, it was not the intention to change the format of committee-
Okay, so I read that wrong.
Committee of the whole, as that's usually a pretty intense meeting on the finance side for, you know, for board.
We do a committee of the whole, so we're all tanning.
We're looking at a second one of those in the spring.
Is there any way we can plan that, I, I apologize, this is off topic. Is there any way we can plan that ahead of the budget meeting, the committee of the whole on 24th?
My opinion is no, because we've had this planned for a while now. And that's very much a, yeah, it's very much a working meeting. That's why we call it a committee of the whole. So we focus on that and we work through it. And it generally takes us several hours to get through the discussion, even just on the assumptions. And there's a lot of good discussion at that, at the table there. I, I, I don't know. I don't see the need for additional input before then.
Yeah. Well, I mean, ideally, in my mind, it would be nice to have community input. But I guess the budget process is a long one. I mean, is it plausible for us? We talked about spring.
And to be clear, there's no vote, there's no action that-
Right, of course.
You're going to, it's probably, quite honestly, it's probably a better action to share the information and get it out there.
Okay, that's fair.
So people, you know, hear that to be able to even respond to.
But nevertheless.
When do we vote on the budget officially?
In September, right?
September, yeah.
Yeah, typically, what, what has happened is, we have come back with, okay, here's what we talked about. This is what the board has settled on. And the business office has then provided you, okay, here's what that model looks like, here's that planning assumption, the post-committee of the whole assumption page. And then the board has the opportunity to say, yep, that, that's where we are. Okay, go for it. And then we continue on with our budget, budget development process. So, but then the budget adoption is, you know, typically, tentative budget in August, final budget in September, with an obligation to have that adopted by the end of September.
Your office is going to need that direction in February.
I was going to say, we leave that meeting in January. And like last year, we left with, we, we looked at the models and we said, yes, we see an impact, but we see that we thought it was feasible to address the, I want to say it was like 380,000, if I remember right exactly, something, some, three to $400,000 that we said we're going to be able to, we, we charged the administration to go and find, so that we could have a, because the model said that we would be over by that much. And we said, okay, go and find that, so that when we get to the, the budget presentation, we have found a way to address that, those dollars. So we would leave that meeting with something like that, or that we need to go further.
Sure. So let me ask this. If, when, when do, when do, I guess, budget owners then, Dr. Byne, start sending you their, I guess, needs for the upcoming school, school year budget? Because I, again, ideally, it would be, we would have more definitive, you know, guidance, not just from us, but from, you know, kind of our constituents as well, with respect to, you know, where do we want to kind of shake out? And, you know, I hate to have, you know, those budget owners submit something to you that ultimately gets trimmed down even, even more so.
So, you know, that process of, of budget development really takes place, you know, through the spring. So once we've got what are the budget assumptions that we're working with, then we share that out with the budget owners across the district to be able to look at programming and think about, here's what the assumptions are, and begin to develop what their budget requests are. There are meetings that take place with, with folks across the district to talk about the budget. So that's all taking place during, you know, February, March, April. We're updating staffing plans. You know, Board, I know you're accustomed to hearing about, you know, what enrollment's starting to shake out like as we start to build that. So we do a couple iterations around planning through salaries and benefits. And we're looking, you know, I'm looking for a pretty well-defined budget by the time we get into May. And, you know, by the time we're into June, we're, you know, we're, we're pretty well locked in. We're doing some refinements around the edges. Because then we go into July and talk with finance about, you know, tentative budget, and prefer to have that pretty well done at, at that point. So that, so, you know, that happens over a period of time. But we do look for that information early enough so that our budget owners are able to start thinking about it. You know, just for example, you know, there's a difference if we tell folks supplies are going to be at a 5% increase, or they're going to be at a 0% increase. And because they've got to think about, okay, what are we doing? And we're dealing with inflation at 7%, give or take. And so my buying power is actually going down. I've got the same amount of money. How do I adjust that? And what am I doing? And programmatically, there are conversations that the administrative team has about what are we doing to meet the needs of our students? And what does that look like as we get into the upcoming year? So all of that's taking place, you know, at that time as we roll through the spring. So ideally, we've got good information by the time we're, you know, it's first half of February, to be able to provide out across the district about, here's the direction we're going with our budget.
We're going to have to make reductions. We need to know by that time as well.
So I think we can-
We need to come prepared.
Yeah, certainly, we can provide, you know, our feedback. I guess what, I guess what I'm, let me rephrase. I guess what I'm hoping for is that somewhere in that March to April timeline, if not February, we're openly engaging community members and asking them to provide us, above and beyond, you know, just emails and public comments, feedback on what they believe we can do as far as, you know, budget assumptions. I, I mean, is that something, you mentioned that we were thinking about spring. Is that something that we can, you know, coordinate? We don't need to answer it today, but is that something we can coordinate sooner rather than later?
If you've got people in mind, Steve, that you want to share our budget assumption list with, I would say do that now. I mean, you, we, you've got what we had from last year.
I do.
And go talk to your constituents and get that feedback and bring it with you. But it's our job to represent the community at that meeting.
Okay, that's fair.
Yeah, I mean, I think, is your point, it is our job to represent the community at that meeting. So at what point have we gotten feedback from the community? Is that what you're asking, Steve?
Certainly.
Actually, this came up today in our, in our coffee. And people were asking, you know, we have, obviously, every parent out there has their list of priorities that are pertinent to their children. And we all know that we can't make all those happen.
Sure.
And, and I, but I think, Dr. Hunt, you did a good job of explaining. I mean, it's not, to your, to your point that you said this morning, it is not our job to go through light. We give you a budget and we hope you, we trust that they do the best with that budget. But I do think, I mean, just like we're talking about with the auditorium, I mean, there are things in our community that probably people would prioritize. So, I mean, I guess, to your point, maybe we share with people we've heard, or we, you know.
No, I think that's totally fair.
And I think the other piece, I, when I kind of agree with Sandra, you have your constituents to get the feedback to bring to this table. And, you know, that's, you know, you're responsible as a board. The other thing is, I'd look back at the last year and a half, the amount of engagement that has occurred has been, I, I think, pretty tremendous. And you have seen the themes in terms of what our constituents have reported and want and desire from our school district. I don't know that any one meeting where, you know, we, we set up is, would ever compete with that level of engagement.
That's fair. That's true.
And I know we talked about last, last year, too. We talked about, at what point do we start to impact programming? I recall, we had that conversation at the table in, in last January. And I think it was really anything above what we found in that model, right? You get to, I don't want to throw a number out there, but-
Well, I, I think Dr. Byne did a good job explaining, we, we know where inflation is going to be. It is going to be higher than we're, we're going to bring in on the revenue side. So we kind of walk into this knowing, it's, it, it's not going to be as rosy as we would like it to be. So we know there's some level of management that's going to have to happen there. And we will evaluate that. And, you know, if it's a significant number, we'll bring that to your attention with recommendations and thoughts around that. So I, I think we, we understand where we're heading. What we don't, what we, we'd need direction is, if there's an interest in, you know, further cutting to impact future levy, future revenue sources, we, we would need some time to prepare that information. That's the information we need to know.
The reality is, the next one, we're already looking at a deficit, too, if inflation continues on the way it is, too. So we're already talking two years of being under what inflation is, even if we keep it at the 5%.
True. See, I mean, that, and that's a challenge. We, we came in, I don't know, for some reason, 430,000 sticks in my head. That's probably not correct. But we came to you last year with a budget, and we knew we had to manage a $430,000 or a $400,000 number, which we were able to do. And it's, it's been a longstanding priority of this board to make sure we, we deliver a balanced budget. And we'll continue, differently, we'll continue to do that.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, I think it's a testament to the ability of this administration. Yeah, I mean, honestly, I think it's a testament to the ability of this administration to have achieved that, to be quite frank. I mean, the work that you've done with the budget, the work that we're, you know, anticipating, it's phenomenal. And I, I don't think anybody's, myself, and I want to be clear. I don't think anybody's criticizing the work. It's just the matter of that diligence. And God knows, you're doing it. I think the question is just, what more can we do? And I think that's the, that, I think that's what's, you know, that's the comment that I hear most often. We appreciate what you're doing. That goes without saying, right? It's a matter of, what can, what more can we do? What can we do differently? And I know that it's, it sounds less than complimentary, but I believe me, it's intended to be complimentary.
I mean, a lot of our job at the board is to, is to, is to balance that budget. And I think twenty, how many years now we've had a balanced budget? Twenty, more than twenty-two, twenty, tell me the number. Twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four?
Something like that, yeah.
But it's also our role to make sure we comply with all the regulation. And we just, we just heard from Bridget about all the, everything that we need to comply with. The number of mandates that come, they often come unfunded, right? So it's our job to make sure we also comply. So it's not, it's not like industry out there where you can make a, you can say, I want to make this kind of sweeping change, because it's just not always possible. So if we're gonna make cuts, I'm gonna just throw out a number. If we ask the administration to cut a million dollars or more, we will be cutting programs. We will be cutting offerings, is, is, that's what my gut says.
So can I, can I recommend, we, we need to get to a baseline point, which is what happens at Committee of the Whole. Where we bring that baseline to the board. I have a feeling, I, I'm not in Dave's office. I have a feeling there's gonna be some level of management that's gonna have to take place for us to even get to a balanced budget. Can we get to the point where we understand what that number is? With that, this year, we'll provide a little more substance into what we think it's gonna take to get to that number. And the board at that point can evaluate that and say, we think you need to do more. And here's kind of the levels in which we would like to progress as a next step. And we know administratively, we would have to turn that around pretty quickly for Dave's office to effectively budget and prepare. I, I will tell you, this is the right time for the conversation going forward, rather than a conversation now about what we need to vote on in two weeks from now, right? So if we start with that baseline, you understand where we're at with actuals, what we're forecasting, play with those assumptions, get to a point where we think we're comfortable, understand from a management standpoint what that might take, and then a conversation about, do you want to see more or not? And, and if so, what thresholds? And we'll turn that around for the board.
Yeah, I think Barry did it.
Do, do we want that at the January meeting though? Or you're saying after the January meeting?
We gotta, we gotta do the baseline, right? The baseline happens in January, right?
If we, I'm just gonna use a million dollars and I don't, don't take this hypothetical million dollars. We are over budget. We will bring with you what we think we need to do to manage that.
In January?
In January. If you say.
If he wants three million dollars.
Then.
I need, in January, we'll be able to give us a parameter? Unless I'm asking.
I think at that point, it's, does the board want to see a million and a half, three, you know, threshold of that? And then we would, we would bring that back.
Well, that baseline will get created though in January, at that January meeting. So it's not like you guys are gonna come. Maybe since you're building that baseline, you might have an idea of what it might be.
We will come with where we fall, and you may tweak those numbers. We get that. But it'll be at least, you know, kind of operating from an informed place.
You know, and board, again, keep in mind that most of the time when we're doing the modeling, we, we have a good idea about what the next year's salaries look like for all of our, our employees, to the majority of our employees who are under contract. And, and this next year, we don't. And so, you know, there's some level of assumption that I have to make around that. Historically, I would, I would do CPI assumption around that. So just to prepare you, if I do that, I will also give you a sensitivity around that one parameter, so that you're able to see what, what that looks like, if that, if that moves. In no way am I trying to presuppose bargaining or make any assumptions around what your position is, what the union's assumption is around bargaining, or where a settlement might be. I just have to put something in. So I can put something in and, and give that to you, so that you know, okay, well, based on how things go, this is what the impact is on our overall budget.
I think then, to Barry's point, you know, maybe the starting line for us is, I think I saw a hundred and seventy million dollars in the operating budget for this upcoming school year. Let's see what, let's, let's keep that, the same hundred and seventy million dollars. And let's figure out what that deficit is. And let's talk about what we can do to meet that deficit with all, with those assumptions as it relates to salaries and, salaries and benefits.
That would be our zero, right?
That would be our zero.
That, the, all right, so just to separate the levy from the budget, because again, we have to have adopted a levy here in December. But for a planning assumption for next year, if you said, we want to see a zero percent increase in the operating budget, presumably, with the exception of additional grant funds that might come in, what, you know, what's involved? I think, I think, Dr. Hunt, that would be, you know, something that, I'm deferring back to you, but clarifying what, what I'm hearing you ask about.
Yeah, no, I, I think that's exactly right. Let's look at it from, and again, this is assuming everyone's in agreement here, or the majority's in agreement here. But it comes down to, what would it look like? And yes, can you come to a balanced budget with the assumption that our operating budget stays the same year over year? So, you know, independent levy, what, what does that look like? And then to that end, I think there's also a question of, you know, can we maintain programmatic offerings as is? And then where can we, where else can we look? And if, if the answer back to us is, you know, it's not plausible, fine. I mean, I, I want to bring this back up, because I brought this up last year and I know it's not, it was, I want, I want to bring up the concept of zero-based budgeting. And I know that it's a difficult process, but given that we're talking about this in December versus, you know, when I brought it up last time, is this something that we can reasonably, you know, entertain? Even from a high level, but just building it up to talk about, you know, what our expense structure looks like? Because if I understood, at least broadly, the approach, it was looking at prior year costs, doing some analysis with respect to some of the larger costs and saying, you know, will this move forward? Will this be adjusted? And then we're gonna grow these by some inflationary measure? And that's your, you know, quote unquote, budget for next year? Is, is, is meeting somewhere in the middle?
Have any other school districts managed to do zero-based budgeting?
I have no idea.
Right, so here, here's what, here's what most districts, most districts will do. Most districts will use a blend of budgeting methodologies to build their budget. So if I'm going to do zero-based budgeting, I'm, I'm going to look at my colleagues sitting here and say, justify why we have each teacher here. And honestly, I'm not sure that that is, is a good use of their time, because we have a whole variety of other expectations and programs that are in place that we're not going to go back to the drawing board to say, well, let's talk about all of our class sizes and justify why we have exactly all these teachers here. Here's why we have all these, we have all these IEPs that call for an assistant here. So now I've, I've justified that. And with about seventy-five percent of our expense tied up in salaries and benefits, often that's not a place where most districts will engage in zero-based budgeting and say, we're gonna start from scratch on that. We start to look at some of the other programs that we offer. So, you know, for example, we've got a little bit over eight percent of our operating budget being spent on transportation. And so, what, you know, one question would be, if I'm going to use a zero-based budgeting approach, how much time do I spend to justify from the get-go why we're doing it? Now, we're obligated to provide transportation here at the district. We're not obligated to provide it in the way that we provide it. But the board has consistently given me direction not to change the level of service that we offer. So, you know, so there again, that would be, okay, well, what's my baseline assumption around how I'm approaching this? Do I want to start at a zero basis? Or do I quickly jump to, all right, for a little over eight percent of our budget, you know, let me take a look at our transportation contract that's already in place, that's got a five percent increase, I believe, for this next year? And, and let me go ahead and just model that, do that relatively quickly. Now, when we start to talk about some of the other expenses, they, quite frankly, tend to be a little bit smaller buckets. Districts will have those conversations with their budget owners. We don't typically do a flat percent increase. But we do ask our budget owners to think through their budget and decide what's appropriate. And that's why you've heard us talk about, especially in supplies, purchase services, capital, non-cap equipment, that those are flexible. As we've got decisions that are being made about what are the right expenses this year to support our student needs? And so, that, you know, while it's perhaps not strictly zero-based budgeting, where we're going through, tell me every individual item that you're planning on purchasing for the next year and justify exactly why you're going to do that particular thing. It is much more akin to a zero-based budgeting, which is what other districts, you know, will often do is, I mean, not just giving you a flat percentage. And trust me, we could do a, I, I know of some districts that have done basically the flat percentage across the board. It's a real simple way to do it. We actually invest significantly more time in conversations and analysis around what the spending is and what we're looking to do. So, yes, we do look at past year's spending, but we also are thoughtful around, what's our intention around the programs that we have for this next year? But a fair bit of the stuff, whether it's leases, software subscriptions for, for our students, we're not typically going back to a zero basis and say, let's assume that we're not going to do that. Some of those are either locked in long-term, or even by the time we get in, you know, if we're, where we're sitting right now, and, and, you know, team, you know, help me here if I'm saying anything that's not quite right. If we were to say, well, let's rethink the delivery of instruction for this next year, could we get rid of a bunch of the subscriptions that we're doing? Can we get rid of our One to World program? Could, you know, some of those kinds of things. My guess is that we probably need a little longer runway on that. I, I'm not, I don't want to speak for you, but I want to throw that out to you to be able to, to tell me if that's correct or not. Which would really be a zero-based budgeting approach that we could do.
Correct.
So often, there's a mix of different techniques, so.
If that's the case, that's totally fair. Because I'm not, I'm certainly not suggesting that you need to justify every single last teacher position. I think we've agreed as a board that we've, that we're obligated to the structure that we have, and I think that stays. What I think we can talk about, and it sounds like you're doing this, so I appreciate you explaining it, is looking through those other, you know, very, what I'm defining as more variable expenses.
And I think it's important to understand, it's a very small part of our budget, those variable expenses.
I mean, it's still twenty-five to thirty percent, isn't it?
Nope.
If you've got seventy-five in staffing, and you've got eight percent in transportation, is that the right number? Eight percent?
It's about eight point four percent in, in transportation. We, you know, as I think through some of the other big things, we've got, you know, a chunk of money tied up, two and a half percent of our budget in private tuition for students receiving special education services out of, out of district. We have food service, you know, we've got almost a, you know, between a half percent to percent tied up in gasoline. We've got utilities and cleaning supplies, about a percentage and a half of our overall budget. So, you know, foods, food service, I don't have that number in front of me, but the, that, you know, again, is, you know, is a chunk of money. So by the time you, you pull out some of these other items, I think, Dr. Hunt, to your point, you, you don't have twenty-five percent that we say, well, we actually have the ability to reduce twenty-five percent of what, of what we do. It's actually less than twenty-five percent that we actually have some real flexibility. But for example, around transportation, you know, board, if you said, we're willing to entertain a significant change in the level of service, you know, that's, involves a fair bit of time. But, you know, could we save some money there? We could save some money there. But I'm still getting transportation calls now. You will start getting them as, as well if we have a dramatic change in that level of service. That provides a meaningful, a meaningful reduction, so.
And if we were gonna do something, let's just, on that same example, we would, we would not just do it overnight. We would say, this is something we're considering, we all agree. And then we would hold even sometimes special meetings to go get feedback, right? To hear more from the community about, okay, we're gonna.
We increased transportation budget a ton when we changed the start time, so there was. The transportation budget has gone up significantly when that came.
And we've also done some things to change the level of service, too. I know we haven't done it in the last couple of years, but we've, we've done some things to significantly change the level of service in the past five years, ten years too, so.
Really, the time for that conversation is when you're renewing your contract. And we're, we're in a contract.
Right, and that, that will be a, a conversation a little less than a year from now about what, what the board's interest is relative to transportation.
Dr. Byn, I'm sorry, can you clarify for me then? You know, I, admittedly, I just took kind of a number. But what exactly is the variable percentage of our budget? Is it closer to like fifteen percent?
I, I would actually have to prepare that.
Of course, I'm, I'm not saying you need to tell me that.
Yeah, if the board wanted some of that information at the Committee of the Whole, be happy as part of that background conversation to go through, you know, what, what does our budget look like? And, and those variable portions, for example, might be things like supplies, instructional supplies, professional development, you know, some of. Curriculum, right? So those would be the kinds of items, and I'd be happy to be able to provide that information for you.
All right, I, I guess I'm just looking at this document. Again, going, going back to a budget for twenty-three, twenty, I'm sorry, fiscal year twenty-three. I mean, a hundred and twenty-two million to a hundred and seventy in expenditures is related to salaries and benefits. So I'm, I'm with you, that's locked. Twenty-six million or so in purchase services.
Yes.
Approximately nine in supplies and materials, approximately four and a half in capital, another six point eight in other objects, and approximately five hundred thousand in non-capitalized equipment. I think it would be that twenty-six million and below, so, that I would want to talk about. And understanding that part of that is probably, you know, like you said, transportation, required services provided to students outside.
That special ed tuition, that's, you know, about two and a half percent and a variety of other things. So, you know, some of those, I think, are difficult to categorize as, you know, as the flex. So something like special education, which is driven by IEP and placement decisions that, that happen, and obligations of the law to provide services, become a little less flexible, and it really is based off of student enrollment and, you know, what, what our particular student mix is during a year. So for me, that, that isn't often, what I would think about is, okay, that's discretionary. And I, I know Peg will love to hear this, but it's, when I've had our special ed team come to me to say, well, we have a student who moved into the district and, you know, we, we've got to do an out-of-district placement. It's gonna cost X, and that really wasn't in the budget. I don't have the ability to say no.
Of course.
Yeah, so I, I'm not encouraging you, Peg, in any way to, you know, to do that, but.
And I'll just, Dave's being very conservative, and I would say fifteen percent is what is really left to look at. And I think that points to why the conversation, and I know we're tired of hearing it, is if you want the level of reductions that we've thrown around in terms of numbers, you're looking at staffing and you're looking at programming. You, you, you gotta get in, you gotta get into there to make those, that level of reduction.
Sure. Well, and I think, well, I mean, without getting too far into the weeds right now.
Oh, we're in the weeds.
We've already got into weeds.
Trust me, I think we go deeper. But with that being the case, I think it's, you know, incumbent upon us, at least as a board, to start kicking around some of those ideas. And you're right, Sandra, certainly, engagement of the community, if it's a special meeting, so be it. You know, there's, there's enough out there where I think we, as a board, need to be cognizant of the fact that we're, we're in a very high inflation environment, and there are families out there that are struggling.
I think it's worthwhile to mention we're not doing the de-sub levy too. I mean, that two point three million in tax savings is significant, right? And so, I mean, at least for this coming year. And Angela and Sandra would know, how many years have we done? How many years, anyway, it's been a while, right? So that's something that I think we acknowledge that gives some tax relief.
I totally agree. Yeah, I totally agree.
All right, so let's get our baseline in January. I haven't heard anything extra that we're, that we're asking to be prepared. But we'll prepare as we have, as we've discussed here today. as we've discussed here today. And, um, please come prepared, Board, to have that discussion.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you, Dr. Byn.
Thank you. Next agenda item is to look at our agenda for the 20th. Do I need to read these off or can you guys see them all here? Is there anything, um, we've got five action items as well as, uh, the property tax levy. And we'll have another hearing, again, to adhere to the timeframe that we need to.
Dave, aren't we doing four summer projects? I mean, uh, four schools? It says three. I, is, the early learning center doesn't come on?
There, there's, there, I mean, just-
No, 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 not.
There, there will be, um, three bid awards. So three action items related to bid awards for summer project work that would happen in 2023. So this is not referendum-related. Uh, this is things like paving, roofing.
Okay, I misunderstood.
So normal summer projects, stuff that we've bid out. So that, that'll actually be three action items. It's, so it's bid awards for three projects. It'll turn into three action items.
So we, we're gonna have, you know, a large number of action items on December 20th.
Dr. Winkelman, do we have, uh, policy?
Well, do we have the, hang on, I said, the, the lease for the, uh, lab at the high school? We had three items that came out of finance.
Finance, right. They're not on here.
Yeah, so, uh, kindergarten enrichment, summer school, and then we'll also have the lease that, um, Steve talked about and the committee, from the committee report.
Two of them are here, so we need those.
Yes, there'll be one more that'll come. I'm sorry, what is minor policies?
Just ones that are only an update as far as the legislation changing or something.
Got it. Just stuff that we don't have control.
There's a cycle for review.
Got it.
Every three?
Alright. Dare I ask, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?